Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, March 1st meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me.
..........................................
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now live broadcasting and recording this meeting for future broadcasts. I just want to make it publicly announced that we have some of our members joining us remotely. We have school committee member Doug Gerard, who's joining us remotely, and also school committee member Tim Wagner. I believe that's all, and one else looks like they're here. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, and we'll observe that for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, can we take a roll call for attendance, please?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. Douth?
Present.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Scofield?
Present.
Mr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Present.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loops?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Twelve present.
Motion carries. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left. Vice Chair Susan.
I look forward to hearing from our representative from our student advisory council in a few minutes from now. Thank you.
I as well. To my left?
Yes, the last Thursday night, we had a meeting with the city council finance committee, and on a six oh vote, they voted not to go for with 350 Memorial Drive. They said that we, they feel that no extra money should be spent on a building. I also heard that we should wait another three years before we consider looking, so as a school committee member, I hear them, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm more than willing to wait three years.
If it's a point of information, that's just a recommendation to their full board. That was their subcommittee?
It will take people.
Just for clarity, I just wanted to let the public know that. Thank you. All set, Don?
Yep.
Grace, you have a poll.
All set.
Sam?
I just want to say I wish that everybody or hope that everyone had a very good winter break and enjoy the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chet?
All set.
All set. We'll go to my right. Sandra?
I just want to remind everyone that as it's staying lighter out later into the early evening, for people to please be careful with driving as the children may be out longer after school. And also, I'm hoping that our student athletes did well in their competition last 17th and 18th. I don't know if anyone has an update on that? They were in Methuen? Okay, well, I hope they did well.
Thank you. Jay?
All set, Mayor.
And Ron?
All set.
David?
But, Mayor, thank you.
And joining us remotely, we have Doug Gerard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to echo my colleague, Mr. Shumsky's remarks. I too would like to wish everybody back to school, and I hope they had a nice relaxing break. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tim Wagner?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. I hope everyone enjoyed their snow day yesterday. And we'll go on to superintendent, public announcements.
I don't have any, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see. Public input. Speakers shall be properly identifying themselves with their name and address. Public input sessions have a time limit of 30 minutes or three minutes for individual speakers. Speakers will be chosen first come, first served. Character assassinations and derogatory attacks will not be tolerated, and questions asked by the public may be referred to the committee or administrative staff for consideration and later response. First up for and only person up for public input, we have Lisa Bianvenu. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening. Lisa Bianvenu, 34 Everett Street. I just want to say, I've been coming to a lot of the school committee meetings. I go to a lot of the city council meetings, and transparency comes up a lot at all of these meetings, and there was a lot that was said during the superintendent's search. And I think there might be some confusion about conflict of interest, and it did come up as a, as a topic of discussion. But something that concerned me was the position that the school committee office was put in because it did come out to say that any conflict of interest, first it was said any members who were on the search committee was filed with the clerk, but there was nothing filed with the clerk. The only conflict of interest that was filed with the city clerk as required was Mr. Wagner, who had said that he had filed one, and that's the only one that was there. And then in the course of the deliberations, it said that conflicts of interest were filed with the school committee or with the, that Sarah, poor Sarah had them. So I actually did a public record request because I know those aren't supposed to be kept there, and I only asked for the conflict of interest disclosure forms that would have been filled out for elected officials who were on the search committee, and there were none. Mr. Morton, who's the public record officer for the school department, did let me know that they only had them on file for members of the committee who were not elected officials who were appointed to that committee where they should be. So it just makes me think about conflict of interest. I think it's very easy to lose context of, especially if you've been on a committee for a long time or you've been dealing in government in a long time, of what's a conflict? What would be considered a conflict? And I, and, and that isn't, to me, it isn't transparency. If, you know, I know that, say, Mr. Lamoth's son is a principal, and, and Mr. Lamoth is very public with it, that his son is a principal, but not everyone is going to know that, and how does that impact any kind of deliberations? I guess that's not up to any of us to decide. That's up to the Ethics Commission to decide. And I, and I am concerned kind of because there was a little back and forth during the meetings of things that were said, and I think there was confusion on, on, on what the, on what needs to be done. And I think moving forward, I, the committee got through all of it, but moving forward, I think there has to be a better understanding of that and a better understanding of conflict. We have to talk, at work, I deal with, over the course of my profession, thousands of companies in the Northeast. I'm well aware of conflict of interest. We have to sign off on this every year. We have to talk about it because I find out a lot of financial information, personal information. You know, we don't go to companies where you might know somebody who's in an ownership position, who's an immediate family member, or you have close ties to, and that's on a, on a business level. As elected officials, it's even more important, and I guess, I just hope that we've all learned something from this moving forward and, and that we as the public question more what's said to us because I know that we think that we're getting the truth, and I believe as it's presented, it's the truth, but we need to question whether it's being done in the best interest. So that, that's all I have to say is, you know, transparency is only as transparent as we, the, the people who are electing make it be by, by looking at what the rules are. So thanks and have a good night.
Thank you. Visitors, we have the Student Advisory Council.
I think we have Mr. Joel Fortson coming up. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, Joel. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to the school committee meeting.
Hello, everyone. So, good evening. Good evening, esteemed school committee members, Superintendent Morton and Assistant Superintendent Francis. My name is Joel Fortson, President of the District Student Advisory Council, and we're here tonight to give you an update on our progress with our goals set for this year. With me is Dr. Petrikowski, an advisor from CHS, and we're all, we're all happy and thankful to be having the opportunity to share what we have been learning and doing. So in the fall, we collaborated with the District Assessment Committee to survey students, parents, and staff to get their input on mid-year and final assessments. Currently, the Assessment Committee is reviewing the results of the survey and plans to meet next week to discuss the results and make recommendations to Assistant Superintendent Francis. In January, we met with Ms. Wilk, the Director of Food Services, to learn more about how her team plans lunches and provides input, we provided input to some changes students would like to see at the schools. Some of the changes that were discussed are as follows: adding bagels as an option to Chicopee Academy, adding juice cups to all schools, offering salads without meat and dairy products, and adding plant-based options as a daily option. It was great to meet with Ms. Wilk, and we learned a lot. She was very supportive and open to our ideas, and some of these changes have been implemented already. We've planned a taste testing at CHS, Chicopee High School, for Student Advisory Council members of all three schools to attend. We've also developed a yonder survey for students, and this survey has gone out to Chicopee Comp and Chicopee High faculty and students. Our next steps will be requesting a meeting with administrators to discuss the feasibility of having a later start time at the high school level. Some of our ideas are to start at eight, eight o'clock because we feel it'll reduce tardiness and help students come to school more prepared and refreshed.
Thank you, Joel. Any questions or comments for Joel? Sheriff Sam Shumsky?
Yes, I just want to know where you got your data from that people would be more apt to show up to school at eight o'clock than 7:40.
See, I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I was wondering where you got the data from that would show that kids would be, or students would be more apt to show up at eight o'clock instead of 7:40?
Um, it's just something that we discussed, and we'd have to survey the students and, and get a final result on that, so we could get back to you on that information at a later time.
Can you do staff, too, to see how they would respond to it?
Staff, yeah. We would also plan on, we could interview them as well or send a survey out.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for that update, and thank you for advising us today on what's going on in the school district.
Thank you.
In Chicopee High. And thank you to Dr. Petrikowski for being here as well. Thank you. Appreciate it. Approval of minutes, 23-3-1.
Move that the minutes of the special meeting of the school committee held on January 23rd, 2023 be approved.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? Sandra Perret?
Just for the viewing public, these minutes were at our past school committee meeting at the end of February, and they were tabled just to add clarity to the minutes of the meeting because we had a question about a conflict of interest with Mr. Lamoth and his son being a principal at Chicopee Comprehensive High School and participating in the questions of the finalists for the superintendent position. So, and then as well, and I will, from that point forward, after the January 23rd meeting, he was attending the meeting but was attending remotely for roll call, which was further discussed at the subsequent meetings that we're going to bring forth. So it was just a matter of increasing the clarity of the minutes of the meeting to outline that Mr. Lamoth was, there was a question about the conflict at the first meeting on January 23rd, and then the subsequent meetings, it was that he was, Mr. Lamoth was present remotely but not participating. He was present for the roll call, and then he, at the final meeting on the 6th, he was present in the audience because he was not, did not, was not able to call in at, at roll call. And then should the meetings be stated as revised?
I think our purview is either to accept or not accept the minutes, so you, you can make motions at your will, but the motion that was made is to approve the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes with the clarity that they're revised minutes from our past meeting.
Do we note it? Don, you have?
Point of information.
Is that a friendly, friendly motion?
Thank you.
Point of information? One minute, Don.
Do I have to make sure it's my reading of my motion?
It's a friendly amendment to the motion. So they're revised minutes.
Yes, I get called out every meeting lately about my son being a principal, so I want to bring some clarity to this. Mrs. Perret and her sister, Mrs. Bianvenu, have been after me. I checked in with the Mrs. LaFawn and Becky prior to the meeting to make sure I should have sat through the meeting or not, and at that time, I was under the opinion that Mr. Reji had put in a form back in 2006 for my son. When I checked on it myself, I found out it wasn't there, so I, I called, I called the state, I talked to the state, and Mrs. Perret asked a question if it basically should be redone, the superintendent's search. According to two lawyers for the state, anything I did prior to calling them was acceptable and legal. I just couldn't continue, so I did not continue. I did not want to not be at the meetings as far as, I don't want my constituents to think that I'm not paying attention to school committee business. That is why I participated remotely and did not participate in the meeting. So there is a form filed at the City Hall. I've never tried to hide the fact that my son was a principal, although Mrs. Bianvenu said that, and I've taken my leave from the state as what I can and can't do. So I just wanted to bring that out in public, seeing it's been brought up two or three meetings in a row now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sandra, second time.
Thank you, Don, for your explanation, and the question about the meeting was simply to add clarity to what was happening. That's all. And the fact that you were present, you were present remotely for the roll call but not participating, and that was why the minutes were asked to be revised.
Okay.
Just so that it was clear from January 23rd, when the question was asked, to you seeking clarification, and then how your attendance at the meeting was, so that it was, it was clear as to what was happening, which I, the minutes as they're presented, now the revised minutes, there is that clarity as to what's happening, and you could see as, if, it's like reading a book. You can see from January 23rd to the February meeting what was happening. So it's, it's clear for anybody who might be picking up these minutes and looking at them. So, and again, thank you for the, the further explanation that you gave.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call. The motion is to approve the revised minutes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 22-3-2.
Move that the minutes of the special meeting of the school committee held on January 24th, 2023 be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Any discussion on the minutes? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 23-3-3.
Move that the minutes of the special meeting of the school committee held on January 25th, 2023 be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Yes, Sandra.
Just again, that these be listed as revised. I failed to mention that on the January 24th one.
So should we have a motion to approve? Is that a friendly motion to?
Fine with me. I'm the one that made the rule.
Well, we already voted on yours, so Grace, this is you. Is this a revised minutes? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
So it's going to be as revised, okay?
It's fine with me.
And my father.
Just a moment. Sandra's checking on the clarity for 23-3-2, which was January 24th, right? Do you wanted to suggest that the motion be a revised minutes?
What is this right here?
I believe we could ask for a motion for reconsideration. So someone who voted in the affirmative could make a motion for reconsideration if you'd like to do that.
I'll make a motion for reconsideration for item 23-3-2.
In order to modify the motion to a revised minutes?
Revised minutes. Thank you.
Is that friendly to the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have a motion for revised minutes. This is 23-3-2. We're going to revote on the January 24th revised minutes.
Mayor, first you have to take a vote on the motion for reconsideration.
Oh, yes, motion for reconsideration first. So we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion passes. Then we'll get a motion for the revised, Don, would you like to make that motion?
Make the motion. Do we accept the revised minutes?
For January 24th, 2023. Any further discussion? Take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. So we're on 23-3-4.
Move that the minutes of the special meeting of the school committee held on January 31st, 2023 be approved.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Revised.
To, motion to revise, sorry.
Motion to approve as revised.
Yes.
Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 23-3-5.
Move that the minutes of the special meeting of the school committee held on February 6th, 2023 be approved.
Chat, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Sandra?
Motion to approve as revised, please.
Is that friendly to your motion as revised? Chat?
Yes.
Yes. Any further discussions? So we have a motion to approve the minutes from February 6th, 2023 as revised. Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries, let's see, 23-3-6.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on February 15th, 2023 be approved.
Sandra?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Look, that's just a regular meeting. Take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 23-3-7.
Report on personnel action. I have one retirement. It's Michelle Philstad Booth. She's a science teacher at Bellamy, 20 years in the district. And a little blurb about her. She joined the staff at Edward Bellamy Middle School in 2003 as a grade seven and eight general science teacher. Michelle can be described as an ultimate team player, always willing to assist her fellow science teachers, as well as any member of her grade seven or eight grade team of teachers. She always goes above and beyond for the betterment of her students and will be greatly missed. Thank you for all that you've done for the students of Bellamy, and thank you for all those things you've done for all the students of Bellamy and the Chicagui Public Schools and their families. We appreciate you and thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Don?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate her on her retirement. I worked with her husband at Hamilton Sunshine for 30 years. So I know Mrs. Booth, and she's a nice lady, and she works hard.
And we all, please, if you're watching, Michelle, we wish you the best in retirement. Sandra.
Congratulations to her on retirement. And also, as part of this personnel section of our meeting, there are four approvals that were given for conferences. And just for the viewing public, I'd like to list what they are and who will be attending. We have Ms. Rebecca Bouchard, our legal compliance officer, who will be going to Orlando, Florida, March 29th through April 1st, to attend Council of School Attorneys Law Seminar. Travel expenses are being paid from travel all schools of about $2,400. Andrea Cameron, a special education coordinator, will be attending the LRP National Institute 2023 Convention in New Orleans from April 16th through the 19th, with the expenses to be paid for by Fiscal Year 22 Rescue Grant. That's about $4,500. John Mearachy, our Director of Budget and Finance, will be attending the 2023 National Association of Federal Education Program Administrators Conference in Washington, DC, March 25th through the 29th. That's being paid for by Fiscal Year 22 Title I Grant of about $2,600. Ms. Andrea Stolar, our Director of Special Education, will be attending Education Week Leadership Symposium in Washington, DC, May 9th through the 12th. And that is also being paid for by the Fiscal Year 22 Rescue Grant of about $2,600.
Thank you. Oh, all set.
Just have one question. What is the travel all schools expense line report?
That's out of the budget, out of the main budget. We put travel in there for PD and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, vice chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to say that on the list of appointments, we hired four three-hour cafeteria workers, and two of them are at one of our biggest schools in the city, Chicagui Comp High School. I'm happy to see those two appointments because I know that we need a lot of staff to run the cafeteria, the food service in that school. Mrs. Scofield and I were fortunate enough to go there about a month ago, and we spent a lot of time in the cafeteria during the course of the first lunch, and it was really interesting to see how everything works. There's a lot that goes on during the course of that time. And we also hired a worker to work at Bellamy and Stephannick. So we're really fortunate to have these staff members aboard, and we're grateful to them. We hope they stick around for a long time.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Can I add, Mayor, that there were no resignations on this particular personnel action? Just wanted to make sure that was highlighted, because sometimes we get called out for resignation, so.
That's one.
Thank you. New business, 23-3-8.
Move that the bills warrant S021723 totaling $420,061.39 be approved.
Jay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Chat, could you read the warrants into the record for us?
There are two warrants submitted by John Mearachy, our Director of Budget and Finance, which we're obliged to take action on. I will read the totals of the two warrants collectively, and then we will vote upon them individually. For athletics, $26,068. Food services, $160,203. General expenses, $126,471. Maintenance, $173,010. Special education, $81,494. Student activities, $5,700. Telecommunications, $1,511. Sales tax, $635. For a total of the two warrants, $1,325,70.
Thank you, Chat. We'll be voting on that first motion, which is for warrant S021723 for $420,061.39. Any discussion about the first warrant? Sarah, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Abstain.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Abstain.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Ten yes, two abstained.
Motion carries 23-3-9.
Move that the bills warrant S022423 totaling $105,846 be approved.
Ron, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Any discussion on the second warrant? Sarah will take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 23-3-10.
Move that the purchase of three 2023 T350 Ford Trans-Advance totaling $207,670.32 be approved.
David, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Don?
Yes, three of these vehicles have mileage exceeding 112,000, and one's around 76,000. According to the maintenance department, Mr. Rizek says that they're getting into poor shape and it's time to replace them.
Thank you. Any other?
The only other part is these are going to be taken out of service, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Sam?
Never mind.
All set. Your questions were answered. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 23-3-11.
Move that the second reading of the following policies be approved as recommended by the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. A, School Committee Organizational Meeting, B7. B, Subcommittees of the School Committee, B9. C, Transfer Funds, D3. D, Field Trips, I27. E, Student Progress Reports to Parents and Guardians, I28. F, Searches, Interrogations, and Arrests, J28. And G, Student Late Night or Overnight Travel, J34.
And Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve and to recommend to the Policy and Human, I'm sorry, to recommend as policy. Susan.
Thank you. I was hoping I could ask Superintendent Morton for an update on the metal detectors and the installation of them and getting them up and running, please.
They're already up. We've just got to get staff training and get some more information from legal to make sure that we're imparting all legal guidelines to make sure they can be utilized in a certain way. But we're looking into doing the training. Been working with the Chicagui Police Department and the Sheriff's Department about making sure that if any volunteer staff want to be trained, because staff would have to be doing the searches through the metal detectors and with the actual handheld ones.
Thanks for working so hard on it, everyone, all the staff involved. Want to keep our students safe. I was speaking with Joel, our representative here this evening from the student advisory, and was speaking to him about it, and he saw the installation of one of them at his school, or some of them. And can we just reflect a moment on G, the student late night or overnight travel? Are there any drastic changes? I see, so prior approval, Joel and I were speaking about it just shortly, and maybe Mr. Lamoth?
The main thing is just to make sure that if student athletes have something coming up, that they're mandatory to make a tournament or whatever, they don't have to come to school committee for approval. So that was hindering the process, like we just now had, as Ms. Perret had asked about the wrestlers in Methuen, we had to come for Mr. Mackin to submit some information. So if they were already eligible for, whether it's state, so whether it's Western Mass or something like that, they would not have to come for approval. That could go for band, that could go for any extracurricular activity that may have overnight travel.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of information, they require the approval of the superintendent.
Right.
Because they're such short notice.
That was the reason for the change. They've got to come before us for a vote, but sometimes it happens so quick that we figured by putting with the approval of superintendent on the emergency type ones or the short-term ones, they could at least get it done without calling a special meeting for it.
Thank you for the clarity.
Sanders raised her hand.
Oh, Sandra.
Does, in from Superintendent Morton or our attorney, want to make any comments on the other policies?
As a point of information, we discussed, I gave an update the last meeting during the report on the policy Subcommittee.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries 23-3-12.
Move that the 2023 summer meeting schedule be approved.
Tim, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the 2023 summer meeting schedule? Sandra.
Just for the viewing public, our two summer meetings are Wednesday, July 19th, and Wednesday, August 16th.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard? Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard? Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries. 23-3-13.
Move that the 2023-24 regular meeting schedule be approved.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries. We have 23-3-14.
Discussion and vote of virtual school enrollment cap. That's something I'd put on agenda, because this is the first time, I think, in my 17 years it has transpired. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 94, and 603 CMR 52.00, for virtual schools, anytime that a district's enrollment in the Commonwealth Virtual, Commonwealth Virtual Schools enrollment, that district's enrollment exceeds 1% of the district's total enrollment, the School Committee has the right to cap any future enrollments into the Commonwealth Virtual Schools. And as we stand right now, Chicopee Public Schools is 1.37. We reported in October Sims, we had 6,735 students, and the Commonwealth Virtual Schools have 92 of our students. So, the School Committee has the right to cap any future enrollments into the virtual school. It would not affect any students that are currently enrolled in the virtual school. They would continue to receive full tuition for those students that are currently in the virtual school. When anything go on forward for the 2023-24, we could restrict that enrollment into the virtual school. And the cost of the previous year was, we had 65 students. The cost of the tuition we were paying out was $616,854. And probably with the addition of 27 additional students for 92 students, the total cost would probably be $765,354 we're paying out in tuition for the students that are at virtual school.
Thank you. Any discussion? Jay?
I just wanted to make sure that we can do this, taking a look at Page 2, under requirements and process for districts eligible to restrict enrollment. It states if a school committee is considering restricting enrollment in the CMVS for the upcoming school year, the department requires the vote to be taken prior to March 1st, 2023, which would be today's date. So, I just want to make sure that we're able to vote on that, considering this says prior to today's date.
Can I check with the department, and today is the last day we can take the vote? So, we meet the, we make it past the line.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
So, for clarity, a decision would have to be made today?
Correct.
If we wanted to limit a cap, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Don?
Make a motion that we cap it at 1%?
So, Don has a motion to cap at 1%. Any discussion on that? Susan?
We're already over the 1%, right?
Yeah, 1.37.
Right, that's what you mentioned, 92 students, that makes sense. I'm familiar with a family, I mean, I went to high school with, and his wife had one child, one daughter. And in, right around ninth grade, this young lady developed a real fear of being in school. She just couldn't go to school. And so, she virtually attended school, and she got her education until she felt comfortable enough, and she rejoined her class at the high school. And I believe 11th grade, maybe two years later, she was educating herself at home virtually for at least a year or two. And when she did come back and join the student body, she ended up graduating. She was one of the best buddies. She remained active, she became active in a lot of programs, and she blended, she did just fine, but she needed those couple of years away from coming to school five days a week. Is that the kind of student we're educating virtually? Why would we want to turn anybody?
There's different reasons why parents want to virtually educate their students, or even homeschool their students. To me, virtual school is another form of school choice for families, and I think the 1% cap doesn't prevent families like you just spoke about from actually going to the virtual school. As long as it's under that 1%, then we're still okay, there's nothing we can cap. Once it goes over that 1%, then we cap any future ones. Doesn't mean we're stopping all people from going to the virtual school, the limit's the 1% where we get to the 1% of our total district enrollment. So, students and families like that will still have the opportunity to apply to the only two virtual schools we have in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But once we get to that 1%, then they will not allow any other students to go in.
Is there a high turnover? They graduate, and then we take more students? We could always be at 1% and?
This is the first time in 17 years we've ever been at 1%. So, it's highly unlikely, and I even was talking to other people, and I was talking to Attorney Bichard and other districts she works with, this is the first time that let loads even got to 1%. And it's a rarity that a lot of districts get to it, because it says we can annually look at it, and we can annually look at it, but we've never been on this list before. This is the first time we've been on this list of actually reaching that 1%. Because if we don't set a actual cap at what percentage, we can go higher than 1%. Then the state automatically defaults back to 1%, and we've never made that 1% before.
I didn't hear clearly the numbers that you spoke about earlier, about, is, those are additional costs to the district?
No, this is what we currently are paying right now. For last year, we paid 65 students, it was $616,854 to go to these virtual schools. They received a tuition for kids to go to these schools. With the addition of 27 additional students, which would be like a cost of about $148,500, the total cost for 92 students would be $765,354. That's the tuition we're paying out to these virtual schools.
Okay, thank you.
Sam Schumsky?
Yes, I just want to know what's going to happen to the 92 students that are exceeding the 1%?
They stay in the school. The vote is, this is, vote is happening, these students are already enrolled prior to the vote. They continue to stay there regardless until they want to withdraw and leave. This vote does not force them to withdraw from the actual virtual school. So, there's no effect on them.
You just wouldn't be adding anymore?
We just wouldn't be adding anymore right now, because we're at 1.37. If we continue to be 1.37, which I'm thinking some of these students would probably graduate, so you still would allow some students in in the fall.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sandra.
The 92 students are in this current school year, correct?
Correct, as of October 1 Sims.
Okay. And several, some may be graduating, but we don't know yet, correct?
Yes, we'd have to look at the report to see how many, school attending report, how many 12th graders they actually have on there.
So, if there are students who are graduating, and that will lower our percentage?
That could actually knock it below the 1.37, actually below the 1%, and it means more students could get enrolled if they want to apply for it.
Up to 1%?
Up to 1%.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, the current students will not be affected?
Correct. Anybody that is enrolled prior to this vote, it doesn't affect them whatsoever unless they want to withdraw and come back to Chicopee Public Schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Jason?
I just, I mean, I think I have a good understanding of it, but I just crunched some numbers real quick. So, it looks like in order for us, if we cap it at 1%, in order for us to accept, I'll say, the next student in the virtual, or for us to approve the next student to attend the virtual, the number would need to drop down to 61 students, I believe, was the number I just came up with when I did some quick math. So, we would have to have, I just want to make sure I understand, we would have to have over 30 students graduate before we would be able to accept another student?
Correct, it would have to be, we wouldn't have anything to do with that, but if the state saw the number, and also, it's not just the 61 that you're saying, it also depends on what our total district enrollment is at that time period.
Okay.
So, if our district enrollment is dropping, that number could be higher depending on, it has to be 1% of what your total district enrollment is at that snapshot in time, which is October 1 Sims.
Okay, thank you.
That's about 6,500 students right now?
At this time, it was 6,735.
So, 67 students.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Anyone joining us remotely? We'll take a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll say, everything sounds good here.
Thank you. Roll call. So, just for clarity, the motion is to cap at 1%. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
No.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
11 yes, 1 no.
Motion carries. 23-3-15.
Yonder pouches, topic requested by School Committee Member Douglas Gerard.
Doug Gerard, you have the floor.
Thank you. A while back, we had a discussion about, in some presentations, Don, about the yonder pouches. We, prior to instituting this, this new yonder pouch, we voted to change the cell phone policy in the high school. And currently, we just have Chicopee Academy, and we also have Chicopee High School using these pouches. And, you know, I just thought it was, you know, a good time to bring it up. I know the other meeting, there was.
Doug, just a point of information, I don't want to interrupt, Doug, I don't want to interrupt you, but it's Chicopee Comprehensive High School and Chicopee High School.
Oh, they have the yonder pouches?
Yonder pouches. The academy has a policy of no phones.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay. Thank you for the clarification, Mayor. But, you know, I just wanted to bring this up with the board, to see maybe, you know, if we should start doing this in our middle schools, you know, the kids maybe in fifth and sixth grade, you know, even fourth grade, it could be bringing their, you know, phones to school. And do we want to, you know, have these pouches in those schools so that, you know, we can teach the kids at an early age? You know, so when they get to high school, they'll be used to this policy, and hopefully at that point, it possibly wouldn't be, you know, such a big change for them. I don't know what my colleagues thought, but I just figured that we'd put it on the, you know, the agenda, just have a discussion about it.
Mr. Gerard, can I just interrupt for a second? So, I have a meeting, we're looking to schedule a meeting with Principal Holt and Principal Andalos. School Committee Member, Mr. Wagner, and I wanted, he wanted to meet with them to have a conversation about yonder pouches in the middle school. As we currently stand right now, this year, the middle school implemented a policy that the cell phones are supposed to be in their lockers all day long. Obviously, that's hard to police sometimes, because they don't always put them in their lockers, but I think it's a better year this year than last year with the cell phones as opposed to having that. That went out early in the year to all parents, guardians, and caregivers about what the policy, or the practice, I won't call it a policy, the protocol, was to keep your cell phones in your lockers during the school day. But is there, we're looking to meet and discuss with the principals of both middle schools to see what their thoughts are about yonder pouches.
Okay, and how are we doing at the academy? You know, do the kids not bring their phones around, or is it still an issue? I mean, is it something that we should consider?
I don't think they need them at the academy, because Chicopee Academy has had a practice where they have taken cell phones upon entry. Mr. Leonard and his staff lock up the cell phones during the school day, and at the end of the day, they unlock them and give them back to them.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate it, and I'm glad we're working on something for the, for the middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you, and I see Tim's hand up. Tim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, Mr. Morton, for not having reached out yet regarding this. I'm about to shoot off an email right now, but I've been busy with school and work. My thoughts at this point are, as many of you know, I was sort of the public advocate for the yonder pouches. I've go watch any number of Western Mass news articles about it. At this point, I think it's worth giving it a serious look for the middle schools, primarily because of, you know, some of the issues that I hear about, some of the feedback that I get from teachers. But I think that it's having a positive impact in the high schools, and it could have a, or have positive impact in the high schools, it could have a positive impact in the middle schools as well, so thank you.
You want to respond? Thank you, Tim. Any other discussion?